Let's put the record, let's put the record for the record. Miss Preston, Mike Laurie. Jeff, John, Karen upon computer. And Mr. Miranda.
All right. So like I said, this is a working meeting, so it's not, it's not an official meeting. It's just us talking about issues that the council talked about, so basically just gonna listen to us talk. There's no public comment or anything like that there. We've invited three speakers to come talk to us about some issues facing the city. So they were invited, so they'll be, they'll be talking. And that's really it. The meeting, we have acquired to stream it, and we can anyway, because we're using the cameras, so Karen can stream then. So we're gonna record the meeting and we'll put it up, we'll put the audio up tomorrow morning, so anybody that wants to listen to our jibber jabber for whatever reason can. So with that, I guess we'll start with the, we're gonna have a presentation about a proposal or an idea for the, for the ice arena. So with that. Where have you guys?
Usually with them. So just so Karen can see.
Yeah, why don't you guys come over here.
You want me to give you your jacket?
Thank you.
I get pulled up.
And please be respectful, gentlemen, please be respectful of your time constraints. Thank you.
Oh, sorry ma'am.
Did they know what happens time they have?
Yeah, so we got about fifteen, twenty minutes, and then that's gonna leave some time for a few minutes to Q and A. So try to keep it to like fifteen. With the benefit of everyone in the room, can you guys just introduce yourselves also?
Well, my name is Dante Gazza, I work for the Lincoln, Nebraska Stars. We are here to propose for the skating to, we sit if possible, buy it if possible. And Lincoln would like to come to this area to start a junior hockey program, which is of the United States Hockey League, which is one step under the NHL for developing players for NHL teams. It is also for Division One hockey players, and they have their owner, who I'm going to, I don't know how we could really do this, because he is, he's supposed to be here doing this presentation, I'm not, but he is on his way to London. It's a very big meeting, because he works for something in Chicago. I'm sorry, what's his name?
Ryan.
Ryan Schiff.
S-C-H-I-F-F?
Yes.
Right.
So, I don't know if we can, let me just, you have?
Unfortunately, you can't screen the other thing, so I have it on my phone if you guys want to share it with me, so you could see it. Karen, I forwarded you an email link to the video. So let me just play it to you guys.
Is it gonna be up there or no?
I, no, we can't.
Is it on YouTube?
If he sends you the link, you have the capability to show it there.
Well, you know, it's me, I have a bigger screen.
Can you send it to Liz, she's got?
Oh, it's YouTube, okay.
I don't think they're, well, it's a YouTube one.
Because it's a private, it's not a shared.
Oh, 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 so she won't be able to open it either then?
If she has the link, you could open it, it's just not published on.
If you send Dave the link, why can't he open it?
He can only go on to this one.
John, David may be able to go on their webpage of the?
No, but there's not, there's.
Okay, so you, you can't change that?
Read the letters to me?
He can.
I did, but the wrong is, it comes up, it comes up unavailable, wasn't available. I copied the link from his phone on here, and it was coming up on.
Just read it to me.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Capital B, rotate W, capital P.
YouTube, John's YouTube page. And I tried to go directly to the kid coming up, doing it.
Okay. See, sometimes simple is better.
Okay, it comes up unavailable to her too.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess I just have to play it for you guys.
A whiteboard and a magic mark.
He probably has it more private or something.
Let me just.
Hi, good evening, this is Ryan Schiff, owner of the Lincoln Stars. I'm setting up this video so that you can get a feel for what we're trying to accomplish coming into Long Beach. I'm sorry that I can't be with you in person, but I'm actually traveling Thursday, next Thursday night, at the same time the meeting is taking place. So I thought it would be a good idea for me to just kind of briefly outline what I think we can do in Long Beach. Relative to my experience in Lincoln, my experience with dealing with municipalities and things like that, I think it's very important to look at the situation right where we are now. From what I've seen, and from what I've read, and from what I've heard in the various times we've been on the phone, the arena right now is kind of in disrepair, number one. Number two, it's not really being used as a focal point for the city. Number three, it's somewhat a drain on the budget and resources of the city. So what we're proposing here is to say, okay, look, we have this building, it's quasi iconic with the Rangers sign and stuff like that, it's been there a really long time, as most of you know, I played there as a kid. We can make this better. We can bring the Lincoln Stars brand in there, which by itself is very important to hockey players. There really isn't a USHL presence on the East Coast, other than the Youngstown Phantoms way up north and west of New York. So it would be an immediate impact, I think, from the perspective of knowing that the Lincoln Stars have a second home on Long Beach. Secondly, we would have teams that would be coming in. First, we'd have one team, and it would grow and grow and grow. If players know that the Lincoln Stars are involved, and there is a cone of development there, where they have an opportunity to play within an organization, that they're gonna have premium coaching, the fees are gonna be fair, and they're gonna have good ice time, and they're gonna be able to be in the cone of development for the Lincoln Stars to potentially play in the USHL at some point, and earn a scholarship to college, it's very important. Having had kids go through the youth hockey programs here in Chicago, I know the cost, and I know what you get out of it, and honestly, it just isn't worth it. So my goal here would be that we would create a program that makes it worth it. You have premium coaching, you have access to Lincoln Star stuff, whether it be our practice plans, our coaches via online review of video, that kind of thing. There are so many ways that we can create economies of scale with the Stars program, even though we're in Lincoln, with the local program in Long Beach. So that, that's one thing. But really, you know, what does it boil down to? Let's get down to brass tacks. Money. Money's going out right now, money's not really coming in. There's a lot being spent on upkeep of the building, there's money being spent on staffing, there's money that's just kind of going out of there for no reason. If we look at what we can bring in, we have expertise in managing this type of facility. So I'm 99% certain that we can reduce the cost to manage a facility by a great deal. The second thing we can do, by bringing the Stars brand in, we can set up tournaments. If we have a summer tournament, similar to the Hockey Night in Boston, but it could be a USHL focus, where kids are playing for the opportunity to maybe come to our main camp someday, or to come to one of our prospects camp. That can bring in, let's say even ten or twenty teams at fifteen kids per. That's a lot of room nights, and a lot of people frequenting the restaurants in local Long Beach, it's rental cars, it's hotels, it's gas, it's all of the different businesses are getting supported by the arena and by the people that are coming to the arena. The Stars have a brand that's very, very well-known, not only in the USHL, but in youth hockey circles. And my feeling is that we can create very cool events around the Stars, whether it would be preseason games, coming into town, having people come to the games, opportunities to skate with our coaches, opportunities for prospects camps, where players are actually trying out to be part of our program. There is a way to build an entire billet program, so the kids that want to play for the Long Beach version of the Lincoln Stars would be able to live in the town. And that could be thousands and thousands of dollars per family to just be living in Long Beach that currently they're not. And, you know, much similar to what we have in Lincoln, we have 23 players on our roster and another 34 on our affiliate list. None of those players are from Lincoln, but they all wind up living there at a point in time, whether it's be, most of them are with a billet family, some of them come in for just a short period and stay in a hotel with their families. There's, there's constant movement and investment back into the Lincoln area. I also believe that there's a lot of opportunity there, from not just the tournaments, but the Stars being involved, but just growing the youth program the right way, I think, is gonna bring people into the city to play youth hockey. I remember driving there as a kid from, I lived in Manhasset, and we went to games in Long Beach, like, if the program is good, people will come and they'll spend money in the town. And I think what's happened here is that it's been a little bit taken for granted, and, you know, I don't mean any disrespect to whoever's running the program now, I'm just saying that there's an opportunity here, that if we can bring in a finite brand that people know and respect, and people that know how to really run a building efficiently and are incented to do so, I think it could be a win-win for everybody. So I'm looking forward to growing with you, taking the Stars brand name and, and giving it a second home, so to speak, building up the youth program, building up tournaments, building up events, prospect camps, and most of all funneling revenue into the city of Long Beach and propping it up, instead of having a building that is kind of bringing it down. And ultimately, when this all starts to come into play as a, as a workforce, there's going to be revenue there, there's going to be opportunity to upgrade the facility and make it even a better place to be. So all of those things, to me, seem like a win. So hopefully, we can get this done sooner than later and have an opportunity to save things, and looking forward to meeting you in person. Thank you.
That's it?
All right.
I think so.
Do you have anything you want to add to what he said?
I think the basic thing here is that both Ryan and myself, since I coached Ryan when he was a little boy, we're going to bring the Rangers in, we're gonna bring the Islanders in, we're bringing the Devils in. Alumni groups, their, their learn, escape programs, just, I guess the main thing here would be is that we're funneling in so many kids, like, I'll give you an example, I have right now, present, three guys who want to come from Canada, live here in Long Beach to be part of the Lincoln Stars. They're willing to bring 20 kids that want to play only in the United States, because they're looking for Division One scholarships. So you would have these kids in the building, their families would either be coming, I have no idea, I don't, I have not gone that far with them as far as conversations, but I would say that even with the other parts of just my reputation as to what I do, I can bring both. Every coach that would come to this unit, this arena, would be an NHL coach, that the Lincoln Stars would be paying for, to develop the kids for either Nebraska or go on to Division One or pro hockey. At present, you may know that Charlie McAvoy is playing for the Boston Bruins, he is a product of my family, teaching Charlie at an early age.
Is this similar to what happens to kids that go to tennis camp in Florida?
Same thing. My niece went, what is it, IMJ, whatever it is, yeah, with Volotar, I guess. So, my, let me just say this, I have, I am probably number three in the world at figure skating. I have no, I have no peers to this sport. I can bring in world-class figure skaters to this building. I've trained, I've made boots for Dorothy Hamel, for Janet Lynn, for the Two U's Girls. I can bring North Atlantics, I can bring Easterns here. I was the, in charge of 1986 at the Coliseum, when they had the US United States Figure Skating National Championships there. Our, I guess the people that I know at the top of the food chain can make this like hockey town, if you really want to go for that.
I just have a couple of questions, because time is. I'm at a little, my name is Scott Mandel, one of the council members, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage, Mr. Schiff just made reference to various phone calls that were held, I wasn't a part of those, so I don't really know the broad strokes here, other than what I just heard. So I don't know, you know, your credentials sound amazing, and somebody who doesn't skate sounds great to me. However, I don't know if this is something, what is the actual deal being proposed? Is this something we need an RFP? Is this, you know, this is?
I guess the thing is, we're just trying to, I guess, start the ball rolling. That's pretty much where we are at this, at this point.
I have a comment, I have a comment. Can you, to answer Scott's question, can you explain the business model that Ryan used with the Lincoln Stars and the University of Nebraska, please?
Sure. The Lincoln Stars sits on the campus of the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. He took over the rink, an aging rink from the university. When he bought the team from the previous owner, he inherited sort of a rink like Long Beach, except bigger. Over time, he fixed it, fixed it up, made it never gonna be, you know, a NASCAR Coliseum, but it's a very workable, serviceable arena.
Peter, Peter, can you explain what he did by fixing it up, and how he did it?
Sure. First off, he had, the university was charging for parking. I forgot what it was, first it was like three bucks to park, and then the university saw he was drawing crowds, so they decided, oh, we're gonna charge $12, $10, I forgot exactly what it was. So he wound up buying the parking and fixing the parking lot, and he still charges $5, but he gives them the $5 back in coupon, so people spend in the facility. He does other events to draw people in, he does boxing, he does concerts, not that we would ever do that, here's the 10,000 seat arena. And he just looks for constantly new revenue streams. For one example, he brings in his prospect, his prospect count, he gets 300 kids to come for a week in, sit to Lincoln, Nebraska.
I'm sorry to interrupt, you're talking about new revenue streams, but those are new revenue streams for him?
Those were new revenue streams for him, the main camp used to be held in Minnesota. So he brought them in, and he gets 300 kids coming to Lincoln for a week.
Peter, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars did Mr. Schiff invest in the facility?
Since he's been there six years, probably close to a million dollars.
What is the actual, in essence, it's looking to privatize our rink, I'm just trying to find out what the scope is.
Yes.
In the essence of time, let's answer the question of what's in it for the city, if the city was to pursue this. His business model and how he makes his money is, is fine, but what it ultimately comes down to is, what would be in it for the city? Would you, what's the model you're thinking of? Leasing the arena, or what?
Leasing the arena would be the key thing. I think the problem here, I think what everybody has to understand is that we're not bringing kids from the local areas, we're bringing them from out of the 50 states. Out of the 50 states, most of these parents who are coming or playing hockey are all fairly wealthy. I would say that an average person that comes in to play hockey in Lincoln, they're spending anywhere from $18,000 to $30,000 per year for their child to get to that level. So there would be buying your properties, or renting your properties, or billing the child here in the city.
In the winter, when?
Only in winter, right.
Okay, but again, so you're saying you're bringing people in from outside? I mean, hockey is big here in Long Beach, so we have local kids that also want to play.
There would be no effect on those local kids.
They're still, they're still at the home.
These kids are all kids that are of older age, we're not talking about a kid who's 14 or 15, we're talking about a kid who's 17, 18, 19 years old.
I'm sorry, you've looked at the site plan already, the two things that you don't know are, you haven't even received a Nebraska parking lot available next to whatever this arena was. There isn't really no parking next to this arena, it's very limited, because there's multi uses going on. In the summertime, when you have those ice skating, figure skating, whatever it is, you keep competing with a lot of other events, so I don't think parking is, have you thought of parking? And number two is, he looked at the building, or Ryan or Ed Neus did, and gave you some kind of idea of the cost that he would consider investing in this structure to make it the way you would need it to look like. Have you considered any part of that investment yet, or you need something from the city to do that?
Well, I would say it's gonna be something that's gonna be a process between the two parties. I would say that the bulk of the kids, being 17, 18, their parents are not gonna, some will let them have cars, but others, if they're living in this general area, you have buses, you have Ubers, these kids can all afford that, they can ride bicycles, they'll be going to your schools, I mean, they want to maintain their education. I've already hooked up with two high schools and two colleges that would also come in here, so that their, their process, even for the kids from Long Beach, would be that they would be able to go, keep going to the steps, because with a junior hockey player, their eligibility only goes to 20 years old. Once they cross 20, they then can go into college for four more years. All these kids are all having the dream, they all think they're gonna play at the top of the food chain, but the bottom line is, we just want to give them the process, they keep going better and better and better. Now, in the state of New York, the rules are so difficult to get to certain little things, and there's so much politics in it, and there's so much backstabbing, and I don't want to go into that part of the game, we're trying to bring legitimacy to this whole thing. So by bringing Lincoln in, it gives you a major player in the sport. And then bringing, say, Mark Messier in, which I would do, because he's trying to build an neighboring facility up in Westchester. So bringing them in also gives more legitimacy to the city and brings more players to the city.
And just to go on your concern about the park, the brunt, the bulk of our activities would be in the winter.
Right.
Where parking won't be so much of an issue, and also, anything in the summer, we've been in contact with local hotels, the two hotels in Long Beach, that they're more than happy to work with us, and they will run shuttle buses.
That's like a seasonal lease? I'm still lost, I don't know, is it seasonal lease, full year lease, are you taking over all functions and duties at the rink?
I wouldn't say we'd have to be a full, because, because of the fact that, I guess you all don't know about hockey, but as of right now, 2021 is in play, right now. It's almost like fashion, well, women's clothing, where they're showing the summer stuff, it's the same thing with hockey. They immediately, once we cross over the 31st, the new year for the following year is already begun. So all programs, right now, in every, every part of the country, is already in process to tell you what's coming for the spring, the summer, and the fall of next year.
So you're proposing, if it's a lease, let's say, to lease it for the full year? So?
You hear that too, right? That's not in my head?
No. If you take the lease, do you assume all the maintenance of the building?
Everything, everything.
Everything?
Food service?
So, I mean?
Food service as well?
Absolutely.
Payment of all utilities, that's true.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Almost like a net lease.
And, and I realize, I'm not, wouldn't hold you to this, but what would be an estimated cost of a lease on a facility like that, in your mind? And this is not something you're gonna be held to, I'm just?
I can give you a number, but, you know, a lot of factors go into it.
I, I get that.
If, you know, depending, if we come in there and the place needs a new roof.
I, I get all that.
Something on the average of 12, 15,000 a month.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, we're not gonna give the building away if we did this for free.
No, no.
It's gotta be something in the city.
Not, we understand.
All right, can, because we're about, can you put something in writing for us? A proposal or something?
If you just tell me where you want, what you want for the proposal, I can pinpoint it right to the point. I mean, what, what is it, did you?
Do you want us to write an RFP, sort of, on the reverse side?
Well, I don't think it's an RFP, we would do that.
No, but I'm just saying like the reverse side.
But what I'm saying is, is what you're proposing to do, what you would?
You want to know what's best for the city.
Yeah, what's the scope of the project, and?
How much it would cost?
And financial benefit to the city, you know, things like that.
When you require the city to do?
Yeah, you know, I, you know, Mr. Schiff was trying to get in touch with us and come out here to visit the arena, and every time we had something set up, he had to cancel, because I guess he's kind of busy traveling all over the world. The one thing, I don't know if you guys are gonna be here tomorrow, the next couple of days, you should really get together with our recreation staff and find out what programs are we running there, and which ones are successful.
Well, that's the other thing, you have to figure out.
I would think you don't, we don't want to have, you know, something come in and then we lose programs that the local people enjoy doing. No problem, I already, I've already built two organizations that work on the island, so it's not a problem, just react the same thing as before.
We're taking what you have, you have here now, and we're not, it ain't broke, we're not fixing it.
We ain't fixing it.
We're gonna expand.
We're just gonna expand it, make it better. That's all we're gonna do.
So the local kids that, you know, are lighting their place here, they'll always have a home.
But without knowing what programs we run, and how often the programs are, and how long the programs are, how do you know you can fit?
Well, that's.
Or your efforts enjoy it all. Well, the hours at the rink, the hours at the rink is not being used, which on, on every rink that's in Long Island or New York State, always shuts down at a certain time. These kids who are playing for the USHL, they can skate at 3:00 in the morning, so they're, they're not at any, I can put them in the middle of the day.
8:00, 7:00.
So, all right, so I think the point is, because like I said, we're out of time, you probably need to get some information on what's going on currently there, because if we pursue this, obviously, we don't want to negatively impact our locals that want to continue playing and doing whatever they do, and put?
John, I don't understand why we don't have a listing or a report ready with, already of what our facilities currently have. There should be, I mean?
We do, the Recreation Department has that.
Right, the Recreation, the Recreation Department has that, but they need to get that.
They, I think they need to get.
They just need a report.
Correct, they need to get that. And then what we need is something in terms of what, what do you want to do, it's like Scott said, the scope of what you want to do, the benefit to the city, and then that gives us something we can work with to, to evaluate, you know, if this is worth pursuing. So, anything else?
No.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Next.
All right, Mr. Regona.
Anybody need this paper?
No, we will take it, Doc.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No problem. Thanks, bud. Do we have the contact information?
What?
Dante, do we have your contact information?
No, I don't think so.
Can you email it?
Do you have a card or anything?
Peter, Peter can.
It's just that we have something to, thank you.
Have at it, sir.
I'm a stander, so I hope you don't mind, I can't sit down. First, I'd like to thank the city council tonight for inviting me here. It took me 34 years to get in front of the city council to discuss things, thank you very much, it's very refreshing. Those of you who don't know me, and that's a lot of you, I'm Phil Regona, I've been working for the city of Long Beach for 34 years. The first 28 was with the police department, where I was fortunate enough to work in many different departments, I was a police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, a police inspector, and the executive officer of the department. In 2014, I began working for the beach park, which has been a great seven years for me. When I took over in 14, I think to say that Long Beach was struggling is probably an understatement. In 2014, we were less than two years out from Sandy, it was a really difficult time. Beach season of '13, we didn't have a boardwalk. They were rebuilding, for part of '13, they had a couple of beaches up with a boardwalk, but in essence, it wasn't there. So when I took over in '14, the first thing I noticed was, the general public looked at Long Beach as being a devastation location, and it wasn't. It was a destination location. I was really upset with the way that they looked at it. So what I did, and my first mission in Beach Park, was to reach out to our partners at the Long Island Railroad. We already partnered with them, we had the Long Island Railroad Beach Getaway Program, which was very successful, it brings people in from the city, and they have a round trip and a beach pass, and they reimburse us for that, and it's a lot of revenue and a very successful program. So I reached out to the marketers for the Long Island Railroad and said, what can we do to kind of really promote our city? Because it's not devastated, we're back in business, and it was a little annoying to me, to be honest with you, that people thought that. They were very gracious, and the first thing the railroad did with us, they said, okay, how about we do sea drops? And I was at the railroad, so they did, they did literature drops, tens of thousands. And I was at the railroad, so they did, they did literature drops, tens of thousands, that I worked with them on, letting everybody know that we have a boardwalk. We have, in my opinion, the best beach that I've ever been to. We had a food court, we had, you know, concession buildings on the boardwalk. We had all our stores back in business. So as we promoted them, and additionally, our city workers, public relations, certainly the staff at the rec, our events coordinators, came out with summer books, went on to News Twelve, and it was successful in fourteen. In two thousand fourteen, we went from, well, thirteen, we had our beach pass sale revenue was just over three million dollars, it was three ma, three million ninety-six thousand dollars. In fourteen, after we started promoting, we, our revenue was three million seven hundred seventy-two thousand. We brought in almost seven hundred thousand dollars more in revenue by letting people know, "Long Beach is here and we're strong." From the years fifteen to nineteen, I'm trying to make it real quick, fifteen to nineteen, we've done over four million dollars in revenue every year.
Every year, we've done four million dollars?
Over four million dollars in revenue from the year two thousand fifteen was to two thousand nineteen.
And that's, that's railroad combined, or is that just...
That's all our beach pass sales, which includes dailies, seasonal railroads, economies.
Who puts the budget number together?
Who gets the numbers here?
No, no, who puts the...
You know, a separate budget line do you do?
I do, I do a budget.
You put the budget line in that budget, cause I remember seeing a four million seven number.
The revenue itself, I report to the controller's office what our revenue is.
No, no, who puts the, who prepares the budget number? That we're gonna see in a couple of months in the, in the budget.
All I can tell you from my end of beach park, the numbers and sales, which is, we have Excel sheets and it's to the penny, the numbers that we sell, our actual numbers, are reported to the city, which is the controller's office.
Okay.
And what they do with it as far as disseminating the budget information
Understood.
would have to be Ms. Resnick, you'd have to speak to her in regards to...
Do you track the beach park, like if you have a, a beach pass, that has number one zero zero one to one, to twenty thousand, let's say, when you give these passes out to the person on, let's say Edwards Boulevard that's giving out daily passes, how do you track?
I'm really glad you asked that question. So when I came in in fourteen, I guess it's the police background, integrity control was number one with me. It was sloppy, it was simply sloppy. So I instituted, or we instituted, Excel sheets, Google Docs. Every single pass that comes in, there's three hundred and forty-one thousand passes, between the season and the dailies. Every one of them is counted and verified by my staff. They come in the first week in April, before we start selling the first week in May, every pass that is sold is verified that we have. Every cashier that signs out their passes for the day, there are three hundred passes, every one of them is signed out. Our supervisors verify and reconcile every single pass. So when they come in, if you sold pass one through twenty,
Right.
you better have, well, you better have, you should have either the money, the credit card receipt when you batch out,
Right.
or your railroad coupon.
Okay.
And what I do in essence then is, if there's a discrepancy and mistakes happen, I track them daily through my spreadsheets. If I see a pattern of more than one, we do integrity testing.
And you, do you oversee the gazebo sales prior to the beach opening season?
I do, I was gonna get to that in a second, Mr. Delorius.
Aye, aye, aye.
No, no, it's fine. So anyway, at this point, we'll go right to twenty twenty, so I don't go past fifteen minutes. Twenty twenty, we're fortunate, we have eighty-four beach days. We only had seventy-nine last year, and that's just the way the season happens, calendar falls. So the city, the beach goes, the residents, everyone's getting five more beach days, which is, in my mind, a good thing. We open up the gazebo for sales May fourth, three weeks before the Memorial Day weekend. What we instituted in fourteen when I came in was the automated calls. So the weekend before, the second, third of May, we reach out to every resident within the city of Long Beach on an automated call to say, "Hey, guys, we're selling passes. I don't know about you guys, but I'm guilty of going Memorial Day weekend on Saturday and saying, 'I gotta get my pass.'" We kinda tell them, "Come on down now, you got three weeks, there aren't lines. Get your passes now," and our preseason sales has, have gone through the roof. So it's, it's worked. So May fourth, we open up for sales, and we've been doing well with that. May twenty-third, we open up for the actual Memorial Day weekend. And we do weekends only from the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, straight through June twenty-first. Twenty-seven, it's Labor Day the fifth, we're open seven days a week, non-empto six P.M. As far as the staffing at the beach park goes, you know, we have, and I'm sure you do know, most of you, but fifteen entrances on the boardwalk, we have fifteen walkovers, every one of them is staffed. My staff includes ticket takers, cashiers, supervisors, and truly, my two right hands, my two managers who've been there for a combined thirty-three years, Monica and Nicole, they're terrific, and without them, without being able to delegate and work with them, it would be very difficult, so they're great. So we have the fifteen entrances on...
Monica and Nicole, they work under what the...
Yeah, work under beach park under me.
Beach park, but beach park is only seasonal?
They're both schoolteachers, yes, in real life, and they're real, and they're real occupation. But they, and they're really good. So the fifteen entrances are all staffed, the west end is no, we have fourteen entry points in the west end. We have two other entry points that are just east of the boards, Roosevelt and Pacific, that are staffed. And we have seven entry points on the six, seven, eight hundred block, which is staffed by ticket takers, cause it's high risers, there's seven of them, that go directly onto the beach. And no one should be entering from the, the building unless they have a pass, so I have them staffed full-time. And on a side note, we get reimbursed from the high risers for their salary. Yes, we do. So for twenty twenty, I hope the weather holds out, but we have, we already started reaching out to people, our supervisors, our managers, and we're, we're getting ready for that. After fourteen, beach park took over a bunch of other things. So beach park isn't just selling beach passes, which it was for a long time, it's the primary focus. But from fourteen on, we took over the day-to-day operations of the summer special police officers, which in about a week and a half, I'll be out at the local colleges recruiting. Nassau Community, Malloy, Hofstra, John Jay, I go there personally and I recruit the criminal justice majors. We staff thirty-five summer special police officers during the course of the season. We normally have fifteen returnees, so we have about twenty that we hire. We get approximately seventy applicants for those twenty positions. Myself, Inspector Ryan from the police department, personally interview every one of them. And it's a very selective process. If you have the ability to go out and write a summons and an appearance ticket to somebody, you need a certain sense of maturity, a thick skin, you need to have good common sense. So we try and pick the best, and I can tell you now...
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, you have, how much money we bring in from the summer specials and their summonses?
Thirty seconds away, nah, that's my next point, sorry. I can just tell you, out of these thirty-five specials, last year was a record-breaking number of municipal code, quality of life summonses they wrote. Quality of life, things that really affect everybody, and if you know anything about policing, it's the little things lead to the big things, and subsequent to that, crime starts to grow. So we wrote eleven hundred summonses last year on specials, that's, which is way above and beyond anything they've issued in the past. And this is while being called rent-a-cops, Smurfs, they really have thick skins and I'm really proud of them. On a side note, doing this for thirty-four years in, between the police department and here, I've seen them all go, go on to bigger and better things. We have federal agents that graduated our program, we have a three-star chief in Nassau County Police Department, who is one of the specials that worked under me years ago, he's one of the highest-ranking officers, Capitol Police, et cetera, so they, they're really good, they've written over fifteen hundred parking summonses in and around the beach and boardwalk.
So you know, I'm sorry to interrupt, though, but do you know how much money we get from the summonses once it goes?
They really vary, so the, the main summonses that are issued are for alcohol on the beach, entering the boardwalk, uh, without a beach pass, beach without a beach pass, dogs on the beach, fires, and unfortunately, which is something I don't understand, urination in public, which is still very prevalent, and it's, again, there's bathrooms everywhere. I don't understand it, but it's one of the summonses that are issued. And you have to go through, I guess, our, our corporation counsel and our A.D.A.s to find out, cause things get pled down.
Right.
So I wouldn't have that number, but the court certainly would know how much revenue is generated from those over one thousand, one hundred tickets. We did enforcement, the collection of revenue, and the final adjudication is obviously done by, by the courts.
So, just, cause in the interest of time, cause we're running short now,
just, call us a comment, not a question, but I think we all know at six o'clock, the people start pouring onto the jetties, standing on the jetties, cause the lifeguards aren't there to shoe them off, and enforcement on that has been pretty lax. So maybe that's something we might wanna pay some attention to.
I can tell you, Mr. Bendo, perception is reality, as we say.
That's my father.
Perception is reality, right? And people believe that, if you see three specials together, there's the kind, the thought that specials aren't doing anything, but the facts before acts, the facts actually met out that that's not the case. What I've done is I rescheduled the specials, so we have three shifts. So the beach at six o'clock closes, as we know. So what we do is I reschedule seven of our specials to work twelve P.M. to eight P.M. in conjunction with the iconic Chief Gillespie, who I work very closely with, with his staff, and that is something that they attack with them. But again, there's always room for improvement, but we're aware of it, and we do have them out on a special shift, and we started several years ago, working the extra two hours to get people out of the water. And if you ask Eastern Volleyball or any of the, I'm the devil incarnate, because I basically won't let in, I even want it six, before six o'clock.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, they can come on at six o'clock.
Before six o'clock, ready to pass, wanna start warming up.
Ask for the money.
Oh, no, we do, and that's why I go back to the devil incarnate line.
And then, I guess I'm trying to understand, we don't have, I, I don't understand yet why we don't have an app that somebody can buy their beach pass on their phone, which would save a lot of plastic, for one thing, obviously, which I guess we could say is an environmental benefit, but would save lines clearly, and...
I can tell you why it doesn't work, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It's really one of those concepts that sounds progressive, sounds good, it sounds like getting to twenty twenty, apps and digital pass applications work really, really well in a lot of areas. So why doesn't that for a daily pass work in Long Beach? Few reasons, I'll go back to my integrity thing. Residents and non-residents pay different prices for a daily. It's fifteen for a non-resident, twelve for a resident. Do it online, good luck upholding that integrity part of it, that's only a small issue, but you're gonna lose revenue with that. We've all been on a boardwalk and beach on a busy summer day. How's your Wi-Fi and your phone working? I'm there seven days a week, spotty at best, nonexistent at worst. Good luck using that app. Thirdly, I hire a whole bunch of local fourteen-year-old kids, their first job out of the gate, and they're working on the beaches as gate attendants, that's their job. Well, it's really a difficult task, and this is no disrespect or to, to the kids, but to teach them how to punch the date and check the pass. I don't know how they'd be able to scan and uphold the integrity of a mobile app. Fourth, and really the most important thing, change for the sake of change is nonsense, in my opinion. And a lot of people believe change, cause we should, it, it doesn't work.
Excuse me, Phil?
What's that?
Yeah, Phil, this is Karen, we would like, we would like you to prevent, present us some options of a, and a beach app. We don't want it here, it can't be done, we would like to see some options.
Oh, no, absolutely can be done, I don't think it's a, I don't think, I think it's creating more problems than solutions. I can do it.
We'll review that.
We have, we've had, we have organizations that wanna talk to us about it.
Ah.
You know, we've had, like, several years ago, and the guy actually walked away and said, after the presentation, and we spoke, he says, "It really doesn't work, you're right." And that was, that was the Red Line Strategies. So we could certainly, so he could bring somebody else in and have a discussion on it. It's not that it can't be done, everything can be done. Is it done for the right reasons, are you creating more problems than solutions? That's my feeling.
Everything's on the table, let's review it.
Yeah, just call somebody else in and we can go over it again.
Okay, so we could just look into it to see if there's any benefit to...
Oh, certainly, I mean, it can be done.
I mean, everybody's moving to it now, if you're the Long Island, even the Long Island Railroad, who's, if they can do it, God knows anyone can.
Yeah, it's something, you can certainly look at it, I just don't know if it's a, if it's a solution, I think it's a bigger problem. Being the boots on the ground...
I know what you're saying, but I mean, you know, you fly now, nobody gets a boarding pass anymore, you do it on here.
Apps work great in a lot of avenues, I just, again, it, it doesn't really affect me, but I think it affects the city, I think it's, it's a negative impact.
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to weigh the pros and cons.
There could be marketing efforts behind that, that's why, that's why Karen's bringing that up. We don't, we're not gonna...
Nope, I understand, and I will, I'll get in front of that, and I'll, I'll speak to the, the people who do it, and we'll present it, and, and an informed decision can be made.
The last thing, Phil, I just have one question as far as training. Training specials, do you give them different training for control of boardwalk and access, and Edwards Boulevard, busy concert nights, the same people? Or are they all trained basically in one aspect of?
No, so the weekend before Memorial Day, which is the sixteenth, I get to senior center, and I bring all the specials in for a ten-hour training session. And I've been doing this since I was the C.O.R. traffic to working the beach park. And when they come in, we go over a manual, very detailed, we do role-play in regards to situations, in regards to common sense, and then we go out, and we do traffic direction. They're aware of the vest they have to wear, how to direct traffic, how important it is to be very visible. As you know, we have them out every weekend in the summer, Park Avenue specifically, with the train crowds, every event you go to, which is initiation by fire, which happens Memorial Day weekend between the city manager's race and the Memorial Day parade. So we do train them extensively in both, and their first week, we don't put any of the new guys alone. All of the new specials are with a senior special to help them and show them, and be like their field training officer. So no one's thrown out, we're out, some really extensive training and on-the-job training additionally.
Thank you.
Just had a quick... I know when you came in in twenty fourteen, you did all overhaul, and I know you put mechanisms in place to ensure that the employees are doing what they're supposed to do. That being said, every summer, we get calls and complaints that "I was up on the boardwalk and I saw ten people go in, I saw a ticket taker didn't take the card." Are you with liberty to say exactly how you enforce that and make sure the employees are doing what they're supposed to do?
Absolutely, cause they're aware, so there's, it's a two-pronged thing. Being in charge of the specials and the beach park is beneficial for me, because I can... So every day, we do what they call beach sweeps. I have my specials go and do sweeps through the beach. If we see something that's a little systemic, where, wow, there's five people who said they could own this beach, they don't have a pass, and they said the person let them on, well, then, what I do is integrity testing. That's me, just about done. The integrity testing that we do is I have my specials, and I probably do it twenty times during the season, where they're beach clothes, which they keep in our trailer, and they go on, and they see if someone let them on without paying, or if they'll take money and not give them a pass. And unfortunately, there's always three or four instances every year where something like that is found. I make sure it's known throughout the whole beach park. The person is summarily fired, I notify civil service that they're not fired again for the city of Long Beach, their parents are notified if it's a juvenile, and they're taken away. So this happens, and it's, it's a little heart-rendering, but it happens every summer, we do that. And in addition, I'll end here, with the Microsoft Excel sheets I get, I follow discrepancies. So in fact, we have someone who, maybe three times, was under, over, but it smoked his fire. We'll also do an integrity test with our summer special officers, who will come on, I'll give them a ten-dollar bill with my name on the back, they'll go up, and I'll say, "Phil Regona." They'll walk in, say, "Hey, you mind if I get on the beach? No problem, no pass." We'll watch them from up the block, I'll go up, if they deny, I'll say, take out the bill, turn it around, says, "Phil Regona, it's not yours. You took that money." So we do this constantly, and the word gets out, and if you have an omnipresence, if they believe you're there, it's gonna kinda stymie any type of loss there that's in their heart. And ninety-nine percent of the kids are great, more, but you wanna make sure the other one percent, no, it's no good.
Thank you, Mr. Regona.
I also thought you instructed the younger kids not to fight with somebody about it, and just to call the specials all the...
Well, if anybody tries to, and we get it, I always say, if you add water, you get instant coffee, you add alcohol, you can get instant jerk, right? It just happens. So when you get that group that comes on, past our ticket takers and cashiers, they're told, "You do not appro, be a good witness." Like retired cops are, just good witnesses. So just be a good witness, watch them go on, they call us, we call... So just be a good witness, watch them go on, they call us, we call the specials, they go down, and we handle it. We never put any of our kids, and there's plenty of them, in harm's way. And even the 16 or 18-olds, no one should be, you're not the police, just watch them, get a clothing description, and we'll send the trained people there.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much, Phil. Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Phil.
Have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Karen. Get back to you now.
All right, Judy.
I don't want to stand and, besides, which if I did, it probably doesn't make much of a difference. So, thank you for having me. I probably don't have a lot of citations and things, because it was a little late when I realized I was invited, but thank you anyway. I'm here to say a couple of things. We are not, but we're not, we are not an organization of prohibition, that's not what this is about. This is about underage drinking and community that has an alcohol problem, I'm just saying it straight out. Phil talked about the number of citations that were given out. I have a packet here that talks about, where we can compare the alcohol-related tickets, and again, I didn't have a lot of time to go further. I'm going to read you the numbers, then I'll give you the packet, it'll be easier. In 2018, from May to December, because we figure that's about when you're going to be on the beach, after December is not so likely, and before May, it's a little dicey. So from May to December, we just pulled sampling, there were, in 2018, there were 874 alcohol-related substances. In 2019, that number jumped to 1,238. So probably because your specials are doing better and we're giving out more tickets, it goes hand in hand. But the point that I'm making is it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Okay, and we need to know that. And when you go to the alcohol-related tickets on the Ocean Beach Park with the same timeframe, because that's where you're at, that where the, all of the alcohol-related tickets in the city of Long Beach have to do with public urination, all that, what the, not the kids, what even the adults tell the cops, I'm not waiting online.
You can see it on some Ring videos.
Yeah, you can, they're just lovely. So the Ocean Bar, Ocean Beach Park tickets from May to December, in the year 2018, there was 696 alcohol-related, and in 2019, there were 921. So we're not exactly going in the direction we would like, in the direction that's safe, really, not only for our kids, but for everything else.
Do you think that, I'm sorry, Judy, to interrupt.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Do you think that numbers increased because of the number of people? Is it a ratio?
Yeah, it's a 50% increase.
Yeah, I, it's a, you know, I would have to look further into the stats.
And I'm just curious, because I'm just.
And I'd have to, I'd have to tell you, I think it's a combination, I think we have a lot of, we do have more people on our beach.
Is there a location? Can you geographically?
I do have that, I don't have that.
No, it's okay, but you have the data somewhere.
I have, I have one of my staff working on breaking it out, because I only heard from you last night.
Because you look trend analysis and where.
Yeah, we have, we can get that for you, but we can tell you also from prior years.
Okay.
That.
I know the New York Police Department, when they key in certain areas.
We have, we have, we can give you a trend map.
You can give a trend map, okay.
And we do all that, but you know, the topic at hand that we would like to talk to you about, of course, is whether you add to this rather not pleasant mix of alcohol on the beach and on Ocean Beach Park, four permanent bars, because that's really what you will have. The city will be in the alcohol business. This is the reason that we have come down, as an organization, based on the research, so clear and so strongly about not doing it. Normally, any alcohol-related anything is in the purview of the state liquor authority, period. Except that this time, you guys own the property. So the leasees, whoever they are, need your permission to apply for a license. What we do know is that whether they continue that lease or not, you now have the potential, you have four licenses on the boardwalk. Part of the proposal that I over, that I heard last time included extending the hours, extending the space. The boardwalk is one of our safer places for kids and families to ride. I'm not so safe anymore, you know, you hear all the complaints about the bikes even, so now you want to add, as Phil said, in San Apple and some jerks, that's what you're going to have. Furthermore, if there's any liability in this litigious society, the thing is going to be, you're going to be sued too. Certainly, the owners or the leasees will have insurance and stuff, but we all know, you're going to also have some liability, or at least substantial liability, and even if it's deemed that it's not, you're going to still have to pay attorney's fees and court's fees for anything that could and might happen under those circumstances. And the bars being open, and I'm going to call them bars, because that's what they're going to be, you're not watching the sunset all winter long from the boardwalk when it sets over the bay. Sounds like a nice concept, but it's just not the reality. Secondly, our kids see it all the time, and this community gives so many messages to our kids that the only way to enjoy anything, whether it's the beach, whether it's Halloween, whatever it is, you can only do it with a red cup in hand. And so research tells us very clearly, and I again can cite that for you another time, that the more places you have to purchase alcohol in a community, the more underage drinking takes place. That's not to say that they are only selling to the kids, it's to say the kids get the message that this is what you do. And so we have almost 99 places you can purchase alcohol in our 3.5-square-mile area. That doesn't include, you know, Point Lookout, East Atlantic Beach, Atlantic Beach, that's just us. That's a lot. In terms of enforcement, the enforcement really falls to our local police, and if you extend the hours, that's what, what is going to happen, because I believe there are, and please don't hold me to this number, but from Westchester through to Suffolk County, there are three or four SLA enforcement agents. Okay? So just do the math. It's near impossible. In fact, when we first started as a coalition, we asked one of the enforcement agents to come and talk to us, because nobody could understand why places that we knew and the police kept citing and referring to the SLA were underage sales, they were getting fines and going about their merry way. So the guy came down to us, and he was, I almost went, sorry, but he was being peppered with all these questions, like, "I don't understand, there's this one, we know this, we know that." You don't ever do anything but fine them. And this poor man said, "Yes, we do, we just closed the bar down in Suffolk County," when that guy took the axe and chopped off the bartender's hand. And we like looked at each other and said, "Okay, that's what it takes." But in reality, the mandate of the state liquor authority is to grant licenses. They're also a cash cow for the state, so they'd much rather fine than remove. And so they have so many different layers. I mean, the last bar that was, had its license revoked, had its license revoked for not paying a fine. And the difference, although the fines were all for underage sales from the year 2002 to 2009, so that one was closed in 2010, but what is closed for not payment of the fine, in that instance, the license stays with the property. So although that owner couldn't reapply for a license, whoever bought the property could and did. So this is that strange confluence of circumstances, that window of opportunity that the city can insert itself, protect our kids, certainly with 99 places to buy alcohol, we've got And we would urge you to do so. I'm going to hand out this packet. It also comes from the state liquor authority, which talks about what they need in terms of for an application for on-premises and the things they enforce, and the things they, or, excuse me, the things that are enforceable. It's not necessarily that they enforce it, like when we say signs at all of our restaurants that say, you know, unlimited drinks for brunch, it's against SLA regulation, but there's just no manpower to do it. So, you know, there are lots of things like that, so I'm going to pass that around. And I'm also going to pass around a study from the CDC, I highlighted the bottom line, I'm not giving you the whole 14-page study, don't worry about it, it just talks about the conclusion, which talks about how alcohol outlet density may play a significant role in the institution of underage drinking during early teenage, especially youths who have no mobility other than a bike or their feet. So take a look at this, certainly, we're happy if you put it, wind up putting it on the agenda, we'll come back to you with much more specifics, but the thing is, there comes a time that there's a tipping point, and we're probably past it. And that's, you know, again, I, we don't do this personally, it's not personal, it's professional. My job, our mandate, is to give you the information, what you do with it is what you do with it. But I would just urge you to really consider, really consider the part of that, I have enough, I just, oh, here.
Excuse me, Judy, this is in addition to the, what, what you're handing out now?
Yeah.
It's in addition to.
This is new.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there. This is, this is new data.
New data, okay.
Okay? The data is literally hot off the presses, like he's stamped it up today. Who doesn't have? And there's one for Karen.
Can you give me one? I'll, yeah, I have some.
Okay. Does anyone need?
So let me, let me ask.
Ask what?
A question. So alcohol-related incidents that take place now that tickets are given out are, I'm guessing, predominantly from people who bring their own alcohol on the beach?
Um, no, no, no. I mean, alcohol-related incidents can be, if we're talking Ocean Beach Park only, or not?
Yeah.
Yes, it would have to be.
Right.
Or, or they walk onto the boardwalk. It's Ocean Beach Park.
I'm guessing most people in this room have had their red solo cups on the beach at some point in their life. If, you know, we already have, I guess, where I'm wrestling is you have, I'll use Riptides as an example, they're on Edwards. You can go get food at Riptides, can't get alcohol.
Right.
You can walk one block over to National.
Because it's a hotel.
And go in the Allegria, and if you go, we've all seen it, you go by the Allegria on a weekend, it's packed at half an hour.
But then again, it's a different beast, it's a hotel license. They have different rules than an on-premises license, and that's one of the things also, because what happens is it's fine to state what you're going to do is have frozen margaritas, and that's it, okay? Going to use Riptides. But your license says more than that. It's an on-premises license, so next week, you can sell whatever, or next summer, or whoever takes over that concession.
So let me, let me ask this, like you said, there's controls on the premises license and stuff, if.
Your mind?
If, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you guys had proposed a limit of two per person, right? So if there was limitations on what people could purchase, it was kept reasonable.
I hear what you're saying.
And, and it was controlled, and it was done, in addition, for a trial period.
You can't. Once that license is granted, it's here.
Once the license is granted, but we can, we still control the property.
You would not have that option, the license would be on your property.
The license is on the property, but we still own the property, we can kick them off the property.
Right. You can, but you still are in, you're still in the alcohol business.
Right.
You're still in the alcohol business.
No, I get what you're saying, that we're allowing it to be done on city-owned property, I do understand that.
That's one piece of it, no, the city would be in the alcohol business, period.
Yeah, I get, I get what you're saying.
In perpetuity, so this council has pure motives, maybe in five years, there's another council that doesn't. That exists. You know, that's one of the things for us, who can look to the future, but we don't have a crystal ball, but you're handing the ability, and again, I will also say what I said a couple of years ago, which is absolutely true. When the leasees signed those leases, there was no alcohol. This is, this is, these are not people who don't know the city of Long Beach, these are not people who are not or were not business owners before, so this is what you went into it with. I fully understand that it's possible that promises were made and not kept, but that doesn't really.
That's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue, and it doesn't matter, because, so we're saying, no matter what, at the very minimum, you are adding four bars to what we already have, okay? At the very minimum. I would also say to you that when you talk about the leasees, you need to talk about people who don't necessarily have a poor history with the state liquor authority.
Right. Let me ask it, so there's some, I don't know if you've done any benchmarking, so obviously the Rockaways now.
Yes.
You can go and get drinks on the boardwalk, Jones Beach does it.
But Jones Beach is not in the middle of a 35,000-person community. It's not.
But their beach is still.
But there's not residential.
You know, East Atlantic Beach obviously has it with the beach clubs and everything. Do we, do you do any benchmarking of these nearby towns?
Okay, I can tell you, I can tell you in terms of the underage piece, that we are 20% higher than the county and the state in terms of past 30-day use.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons that we were able to get multiple grants to address it, and we've done it in partnership with the city, in partnership with the police department. I, except for the summer, I think, right? I usually go in and talk to the specials, because it's hard for them, they're underage themselves, to walk up, you know, it's all of that, about why it's important. And we also have something going on that we've done since 2003 with the city court system, which is that young people who are cited for an open container, wherever it is in the city, wind up getting an appearance ticket, they have to go to court. When they go to court, the corporation counsel or the DA gives them a choice that they can either attend three weeks of the alcohol and substance use education program that's long to where runs. Until last summer, it was grant-funded fully, that grant went away, so now we charge, just for my staff time, so we charge $30, and that's never been a problem, we've had over, oh my God, 1,800 kids go through the program since we started it. I'll also tell you, just as an aside, one of our former coalition members has a business in Oceanside, and watches it close circuit because it's a business, and called me one day, two summers ago, and said, "Well, your message is getting out, because I thought these kids were breaking into my yard to steal a truck." And no, they were breaking in to get in the back of the U-Haul so they could drink beer they brought, because there was too much of a risk of getting caught and lunged. You know, and so it's, it's a multi-pronged thing.
So, because we're just about out of time, let me, and I don't want to hog it if anyone else has questions, too. Do you, and this, this is an opinion question purely from you, is, if you were to have a conversation with them, do you think there's any accommodation that you could come to with them that would, you think would alleviate your concerns to the point where you think it could be acceptable?
Okay. Straight answer?
Yeah, that's our answer.
No.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why, because they're not my opinions. It's based on evidence, it's based on research, it's based on data, it's not Judy Vining's opinion. Judy Vining puts this stuff together and presents it to you. I can't change the fact that we are way over the tipping point in the number of alcohol establishments. That, they could be the nicest people in the world, it's not about nice or not nice, it's about at what point do the needs of the citizens and the health and the welfare of our community and the way we want to present it to young families so they can have some real buy-in and not. real buy-in and not decide when their kids are five or eight or seven or 10, there's a better place for me to raise my kid.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm-
Karen? Got any?
Just the Rockaways, just the Rockaway model, like, what, does that work at all, or does it seem to work? They seem to have very limited hours.
It's also very new. They haven't been, in, in terms of the population, it's anywhere near the boardwalk there, or wherever they're selling.
I just have one question, Judy. I see you initially-
You know what I'm saying? There's not, the density is not there.
It's, it's, it's pretty, it's getting pretty dense there.
No, the alcohol establishment density.
No, on the boardwalk, no, it's not alcohol density, it's only like-
Right, and even if you go a little further away, you don't have a lot of alcohol density in that area, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
And that's one of the factors that contributes to underage drinking.
Topic still leaves a lot of discussion.
Okay.
This topic still leaves a lot of discussion.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for listening.
All right. And I guess we got a little bit of a, just a lightning round. I don't think these are, these are just date kind of things, not anything where we're having any kind of in-depth, so just, what I meant by budget update just means it's underway, right?
It's underway. Each, each department head has been given a six-month actual expenditure for this year, three-year history, and as of today, end of today, Gina has set up an appointment with each one of them to meet with myself and the controller to go over their budgets so that we can finalize them as a first draft and see where we're at overall.
The, the other thing, there's been some mention of this, and again, we're not gonna probably get into it in depth tonight because this is gonna take some, would be help from all of you, but the idea of potentially changing our fiscal year so we don't split the summer, you know, maybe do it, whether it's a calendar year or like the federal government, October to, you know, whatever.
In the CMA's report, they've done some analysis on that, it's one of their recommendations.
All right. But that's something we probably want to think about too, because I know it creates a budgeting nightmare splitting the beach revenues in half each year.
And the cost that are related to it.
Yeah.
Having, having done, having done a stub year myself, it's a process that will take at least a year to do.
What are those?
Well, Karen, it takes about a year to do it.
Yeah, you would have to, basically, you go through the next fiscal year, and then you do a stub fiscal year for maybe six months, and then, then you start on the calendar year. Hopefully, you're a process to get everything done.
And there's some stuff that has to happen up in Albany, too, to shift our fiscal year, just-
So it's, it's not as quick as it's been in the year?
No, no, but I think it'll make our budgeting a lot easier.
Start for the future.
But we should start the process, yeah, okay.
All right.
Karen has to-
Oh, Karen, I'll hold on to your budget package or your, your mail package, and when you come back, I'll get it to you.
I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
There's no sign for all of yous, that's okay.
So just then, just quickly to the CMA report, is, where are we with that? Is it?
We'll be ready to do on March 12th the complete review of the planned draft.
Okay. All right, see, that was simple. I guess this is a question for you, the commissions and boards' online application, so.
It's not live yet.
Okay.
This is the version. I sent the closing point to all of you guys, I think, last week, a couple of you have run tests on it.
Right.
I was looking for any feedback from you guys before we put it live.
Okay. And it was set up, it doesn't take an attachment, right? But there's an email address that they could send a resume to or whatever?
You see, it says right on the top there, it says, and it says on the preceding pages that I can't bring up right now.
Can you scroll down any bit? It's, it's still such a big-
I think Liz was asking-
Oh, yeah, it's much better.
But you were asking, what was your particular question on commissions and boards? When you clicked, you wanted to see a description? Was that new or?
Yeah, can we, can that be, happen? So like, say, we click, I wanted to join the-
I don't know if you can do it some here, David, but-
That's what I'm going to right now. So right now, I'm on the, under government, on our website, under commissions and boards, there is a listing for each of our commissions and boards.
So, on, on the application where the commissions and boards are listed-
Can you say?
With the little box, the check?
Make the hyperlink?
Can we make those hyperlinks so it'll take them to these descriptions?
I don't know, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Because the way, the way that the, the application's set up, these-
Because then you'll, you'll jump out of the application and that-
That's, that's one of your problems, you jump out of the application, and I have these set up as checkbox boxes on here, and it's not, I don't think I have the ability to-
So maybe we could add the-
Manipulate the text on it.
Maybe we could add, I'm sorry.
I, I can put the link up, up, up here where I have the text, I say, for a full description, click here and go back.
Yeah, yeah, put a link there that they-
There you go.
It's gonna go back to the page storyline, but it'll still be that, it's gonna be that.
So do that for-
Well, if they do, like, they'll have split screen or two screens or whatever.
If he does that, do you want to press it?
Are you waving at us or?
You have your hand raised?
Is that a hand raised?
I'm here.
Sorry, Karen.
Hi. We had to ask Mr. Miranda for like descriptions of each of the boards and commissions, the ones that, that we're opening up, along with the roles and, roles and responsibilities of being on those commissions, so that you, so that we can get the most qualified people. That's the stuff that we need to be linked to the, to the, to the application, not just, hey, this is a commission.
So that's-
Well, that's all, the, all each committee and commission is in the charter or in the ordinance, and it explains it. When we had done that original spreadsheet, the last box explains the committee.
Is it on the webpage, David? Just move it by the side.
Yeah, we can find it.
Yeah, and if you look at, I have right now, I have the one for advisory boards for seniors up there right now, and it, it tells you it has composed of nine members.
Right.
Exactly, it doesn't say anything about what your roles and responsibilities are.
It says, the Magnolia Senior Programs Advisory meets monthly to advise on current and future programming. And so it has very-
That's pretty vague.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it does have a-
Do you want it to be vague?
Is there more, is there a more detailed description in it? Well, God knows if it's up to date.
Some of them do, some of them don't.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It depends on the committee and how much, how active they've been.
I'm just wondering if there's something we can cut and paste out of the charter.
Do we want to ask each committee to draft up their missions, what they do?
Exactly.
Do we want to ask people who are already on the committee to draft up what they do and their-
I think, I think an annual type of report.
Well, in theory-
Like, what do we do? Because if you, John, if you go to the charter-
In a utopian world, they have a charter, but I'm guessing that doesn't exist in those cases.
We want to get this sooner than later.
Yeah.
But if you use some of the charter stuff, it's gonna be outdated then, but-
No, 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 I'm not saying-
We already asked Mr. Miranda for this last week, so, John, what, he wanted to do all this information together.
Office for seniors. So in section 30, office for seniors, there's an office to advise and assist the city manager in developing policies designed to help meet the needs, needs of seniors and to encourage the whole participation. So it says to coordinate more programs, to coordinate and assist the, ooh, that's an interesting one, political subdivisions in the development of local programs for seniors, and to render a written report.
So that's what we asked John for last week, right?
Yes.
Those are all right out of the charter and the ordinance.
But there's no-
I don't, I can't add stuff to unless you want to give me direction on other things to do.
No, no, we just want, so can we get this?
We can, we can add any, any description that we have that's in the, in the ordinance, we can provide.
So it's a cut and paste and to-
Absolutely.
And I have, I have one for the housing authority, with the roles and responsibilities, because that is, that's a little more unique, which I will forward to you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, just anything going on with the Hal site? I guess there was a little-
They, they will be submitting very shortly. Our consultant has finished her recommendations on changes and things they need to look at. They've incorporated it into their DEIS, and that DEIS will be handed over to the zoning board shortly, I think, sometime next week, which will be on a flash drive and for each council member, for each-
Okay, so they're still going for variances then?
Right.
Okay.
Only, is my understanding, it's only for that DEIS right now? In other words, this DEIS is being reviewed by the zoning board because they remanded them to go and get an environmental impact statement. So they can only look at that before, one second, before it's reviewed by internal staff and external profession, experts. Because the zoning board are not experts in this.
Right, no, but our, our consultant has been reviewing it all along and sending it back and forth to Al's engineer who's doing the DEIS for them.
Okay.
Okay, and getting, you know, telling them where they need to expand it, where they need to make changes in it, and that's been going back and forth. That's complete now, so now they'll be getting a draft DEIS that's theirs coming to the zoning board for the zoning board review.
And our consultant is, I'm sorry, my-
Yeah, I just want to be-
Our consultant is Carrie O'Fowell from Nelson &amp; Pope.
The same person that they'd be North Park overlay presentation. I just wanted to make it clear to you guys, because I just want to understand it. This presentation to the zoning board is strictly only the DEIS and not height or anything else like that, correct?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much they're going for.
Yeah, I don't know what they, you know, it's all related, everything in that-
Are they on the calendar for this month?
In that DEIS is related to what they're proposing, so.
Are they on the calendar for this?
I don't think people-
I don't think they'll be on the calendar for this month yet.
Yeah, I think people don't.
So I'm sure we'll hear more. Just, how's the bulkhead project going?
Well, we hit a little snag in the bulkhead project. This bulkhead, we're using very deep fiberglass sheeting, and it's being held back with helical piles. What was happening, they were going in about four feet with the helical pile and hitting some-
Horizontally to tie it back in?
On an angle, a 45-degree angle, and they couldn't get them in, they're getting some kind of obstruction, that obstruction is being dug up and removed.
Jimmy Hoffa?
Uh, no, it's much bigger than Jimmy Hoffa, and much more solid. It's been hitting it along for the first couple hundred feet, so-
Really?
They're gonna dig it up, it's, we're just reviewing the change order for it, we have contingency money in the bid for this type of thing, but it's gonna have to be dug up and removed before they can put the helicals in.
Do they have any idea, is it, it's not wood or something, I mean, is it something-
It's some kind of wood bulkhead.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, they found that old wood, wood bulkhead when they were doing the beach, right? They found that old wooden jetty or whatever.
It's a pirate.
If they find pirate doubloons, let's-
But otherwise, the project is moving along fairly quickly.
You know it's coming Tuesday, you know, the, the thing that, the thing is 20 feet taller than it's supposed to be and, you know.
You know, what's interesting is, a lot of the people that have gone over and seen it and complained of the people that are on the next block that's being done with that block, is at a much higher elevation.
Right.
And so it has big of effect.
Right.
And it's interesting, the bulkhead is attaching to, at the water end, at the bay end, is one foot, four inches lower, but when it gets down to the other end, the dead end of the canal, it's only a four-inch difference.
So I was down there and I looked, I went to the dead-end canal, and there's like a playground area.
That's on Clark Street.
Clark Street?
No, that went on Herron. No, not the, it's a person's personal playground.
What people have, yeah.
But, so that, the bulkhead will continue past that, because I was there the other day when it was really windy, I just wanted to check the crane wasn't falling over. That's what I do. The-
You know, we have an inspector on the job that keeps it in those space.
It's still in my blood, I gotta check. You're making butterballs. So at the end, it's going to go all the way down to the end of the block though, right? Because I was there on Wednesday, I think, I know it's Wednesday.
It goes all the way right to the end of the block, to the dead-end part of the canal, yeah, the entire thing.
Because otherwise-
They will lift all that equipment over the bridge, they'll set a crane up on the bridge when they get to that point.
So people that have boats would, boats just get stairs and, right, okay.
And so far, we've had pretty good feedback. The contractor's working pretty well with the homeowners on moving their stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
The audit, Bonnadeo, they all done?
I think they're all done with their in-house gathering of data, and now we should be seeing a report from them soon.
Okay. I'd love, there's anything to talk about here. Do we need to, do we still need to set up a meeting with Brian just to get a-
He might have just come in and presented to you what he's been doing, some of the things, because-
Okay.
Some of the things he did last year helped increase the beach.
Yeah, yeah, all right, yeah, we'll set that up then. You got any, anything on the boardwalk lights? I saw there was an article in Newsday today, Mr. Ashbury.
It was on CBS.
Yeah, we brought in an expert from a local company on Long Island. These lights were part of the contract for putting the boardwalk together, and the contract, they use a company called Sternberg. They manufactured the lights. This was seven years ago, they had a five-year warranty. The lights are now seven years old. However, we feel there's a design flaw in the connection where the, where the light fixture attaches to the pole, there's a ball and set screws, and I think from all the wind and the corrosion, what's happening, the set screws wear out, and then the light just drops straight down. Their fixtures are fairly heavy, they're about 60, 70 pounds. We did bring in an expert from this other company on Long Island, from Magnaflood, to help us come up with a solution to fix it. We're pushing Sternberg to be, do the fixes. The gentleman that's working on this actually worked on a very similar problem on the George Washington Bridge because of, in addition to the wind and the salt air there, the vibrations from the bridge were dropping lights left and right. So, so he's got some good solutions he's recommended to us.